Good evening. It's Wednesday, March 18, 2020, and this is the regular meeting of your Holland City Council. As your mayor, Nathan Box, I'm calling this meeting to order. I want to start this meeting by saying a few words. This is an unprecedented time in our community. First, to council and to staff, thank you for being here. It's important that you're here. You're smart, you're dedicated, and day after day, you have shown that you care deeply about this community that we all love. We as a community are strong, we're resilient. The city of Holland does not close. Over the last days and weeks, I've been working closely with city leaders and city staff, and let me tell you, we are in good hands. We've been all working diligently to make smart decisions with the best information that we have available, and we've been adapting to a quickly changing environment, and we want to do what we can to keep our employees, our volunteers, and the general public healthy. For that reason, we've decided to temporarily stop non-essential face-to-face board, committee, and commission meetings, because under the law, those meetings must be open to the public. We're working on ways for those meetings to start again as soon as possible in a way that helps protect the participants and maintains openness and transparency in government. The law of the state of Michigan, the Open Meetings Act, applies to all of our meetings. It provides transparency, and it gives the public the right to not only view our meetings, but to participate. And we've been working with the state government this week to try to get some changes made to that, and actually, within the last hour, we've been notified that there have been some changes with an executive order by Gretchen Whitmer, the governor, but we're not adapting those because those only came down just 45 minutes ago. So we may be making some changes for next week's meeting as well, a really good example of how quickly this environment is changing all around us. But the reason why we're here tonight is to do the work of the city of Holland for the people of the city of Holland, and to do that as safely as we can. This city council will continue to hold its regular meetings as scheduled. Now, we've made some accommodations to allow us to continue the work of the city as safely as we possibly can. You'll notice we didn't have our traditional pre-meeting dinner tonight. We're going to be stopping those for the time being, so sorry about that. We're not going to be holding pre-council meetings or study sessions, and we're going to be limiting our agenda to just the items that are essential to provide for the operation of the city. As you all know, this city has great plans and great projects in the works. The city of Holland rarely slows down, but at this time, it's prudent to focus our attention on providing the essential services that help keep our community healthy and strong, because our city provides a lot of vital services to our residents. We provide police protection, fire protection, electricity, water, wastewater, broadband, just to name a few. Those services will continue, and we will continue to do the work of the people of Holland, because the city of Holland does not close. But we're taking precautions. We're being prudent. This room and this meeting are a good example of that. As you look around, we're spaced quite far apart here up on the dais, and if the camera pans out, they'll see that there's a lot of space between the chairs and the audience. We want to keep our staff, we want to keep our council, and we want to keep the residents of this community safe, all while having an open meeting. We're enforcing social distancing, and we're going to enforce that in this room. We definitely want members of the public to come if they want to speak to council, but we're going to enforce social distancing the same as we do any other rule that we may have to keep order at our meetings. This is definitely a time of uncertainty, but let me tell you something that I do know: we will get through this together. I couldn't be more proud of the people that I work with here at the city. I couldn't be more proud of the leaders of this community. Our leadership, not just in City Hall, but across this community, is coming together in unprecedented ways to meet the challenges that are before us, because that's who we are. And I couldn't be more proud of our residents for coming together to support each other, because that's who we are. Smart, dedicated, competent, caring, there are simply not enough positive adjectives to describe the people of this great community. We'll face tough challenges. Our normal lives will look different for a while, but we can handle that together. In the weeks and months to come, I'm confident that we'll continue to work together to overcome any obstacles that are in our way, because that's who we are. We'll look after our neighbors. We'll support our local businesses, and we will preserve our traditions. We'll rally, and we will rise, and we'll be better for it. This is Holland, Michigan, and we get to live here. Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Byrd?
Present.
Peters? Garcia?
Here.
Trithuie?
Here.
Arnsour?
Here.
Corbin?
Here.
Hookstra?
Here.
Raymond?
Here.
Mayor Box?
Here.
We have a quorum?
Not only do we have a quorum, we have every single member of the Holland City Council here. Thank you all for that. We're going to begin this meeting as we've begun meetings for many, many years here, first with an opening prayer by council member Byrd, and then immediately followed by the pledge of allegiance. We would love to have you join us if you would.
I would like to say a couple of words before I actually begin a prayer, and as the mayor has spoken already, this is a trying time for us as a community, a local community, as a community all the way to a world issue, and as Americans, we have roots that go all the way back to freedom of religion. There are other freedoms that our forefathers fought for or wanted when they came here, and freedom of religion was one of those. As I say that, I say that because of, March 15 was a very important day for me as a Christian believer, and that was the day that our President Trump declared a national day of prayer. I understand the freedoms that we have. Some may think, "Well, I'm a little off-base with bringing this up," but I would argue that we have those freedoms, and I exercise that freedom right now for myself. There are some who don't pray, and that's fine, absolutely fine, because once again, we have those freedoms. And for me, I would like to state those facts, but also stand in agreement and not just have March 15 be a national day of prayer. I really believe in prayer. I believe in a living God, and with that said, as we go to our respective areas in our lives, our homes, and we turn on the news, we see all around different countries doing the same thing. Some of them are not Christians, different religions around the world who are praying for their loved ones, who are praying for their communities, who are praying for their states, and even people around the world. And as time has shown, this world has become so small because of the technologies that we have. So, you know, China isn't far away now, and with the issues that we have, we were able to watch that unfold to the point where it is on our front porch now. We've had a couple of people, well, I don't know how many for sure, but we've had at least one person diagnosed with this in our community. So it's here at our front door now. And I want the community to know, I echo what Mayor Box said about us standing together, us as a community standing together, us as council members standing together, and as he stated, we don't only have a quorum, we're all here. And we have some very important people in our community who are running this community, who you don't see on camera, who are here. So I want to thank each and every one of you for being here, and each and one of you on council for being here as well. So if you would, would you bow your heads as I pray? Dear Father, I thank you for the opportunity to come to this place today and deliberate on things that matter in this city. As we move forward in this uncharted territory, for us specifically here in Holland, Michigan, and around the world, that you would be with us, that you would give decision-makers wisdom and guidance as they make decisions that will inevitably affect millions of people. I pray, Father, that you would comfort people who are in fear, who are uncomfortable, and who are, who are just, and those who have had the virus, and I just pray for a comfort level that they have not understood or that they have never felt before. And as we deliberate today and moving forward, going forward, I pray that you would give us wisdom. I believe there has been wise counsel and things that have been set in place here in Holland, Michigan, and I just declare and decree that we will continue to do that, we will continue to move forward, and not only set precedence and other things as people know us for the tulips, the snowmelt, but that we will set a pattern here as we go forward in the coronavirus situation that's in front of us right now. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Quincy. Next is our consent agenda items. There are a number of items that are listed in the agenda that are considered to be routine and have previously been reviewed by council, and will all be enacted in one motion, unless a member of council or a member of the public asks to have that removed. The first thing we'll do is we'll have all of those items on the consent agenda red, and then if there's anyone who wants to remove an item from the consent agenda and have it placed on the regular agenda in regular order. Regular agenda in regular order, then we will do that. Kathy, would you please read the consent agenda?
B, approval of minutes. 4D, Board of Public Works, appointments to the Water System Advisory Council. 4E, claim filed against the city. 4F, annual liquor license renewals. 4G, Tulip Time Festival approval of the 2020 agreement. 4H, purchasing downtown award bar mulch bids. 4I, purchasing parks, wayfinding signage. 4J, purchasing Lakeview Park playground surfacing.
Thank you very much. Are there any items that a member of the public would like to have removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda? Seeing none, are there any items that a council member would like to have removed from the consent agenda? Yes?
I have a question, Mayor, about the Tulip Time Festival approval. What should we do with that?
We should, that should be removed, yes.
Let's, shall I move that we remove that?
Yep.
From the agenda?
Great, we've got a motion to remove the Tulip Time Festival 2020 agreement from the agenda. Is there a support for that?
Support.
Support by Byrd? Any discussion? For those people who may not realize it, the reason why that is being, one of the reasons I believe that that's being removed from the consent agenda has to do with the fact that this week, the Tulip Time Festival has been canceled. Incredibly unfortunate, first time in the festival's history, but the best, in my mind, the best decision for them to make at this time. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Any other items that need to be removed from the consent agenda? All right, seeing none, do a roll call vote? Oh, need a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended?
Motion to adopt the agenda as presented with the amendment.
Move by Trithuie?
Support.
Support by Arnsour. Any discussion? Could we have a roll call vote, please, Kathy?
Peters?
Yes.
Garcia?
Yes.
Trithuie?
Yes.
Arnsour?
Yes.
Hookstra?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry, Corbin?
Yes.
Hookstra?
Yes.
Raymond?
Yes.
Byrd?
Yes.
Mayor Box?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. And I don't know if the folks at home can hear it or not, we've got a little echo going on in here, partly due to the fact that we've moved people around into different locations and microphones in locations that they are not normally placed, so we apologize if you're hearing that at home. If you're not hearing it at home, just ignore it, because that's what we're going to do here. Next item on the agenda is public comment. Before I go through all of the rules on that, I think I'm just going to ask if there's anyone here who wants to step to the podium for public comment period. We always provide that opportunity for members of the public to speak at our meetings. Is there anyone here who would like to speak to council at this time? Seeing none, I will close the public comment period.
Excuse me, Your Honor?
Yes.
If I could just ask a question here. We have two communications that were given to us, and they're not being presented in person. Do we want to include these into the record?
I believe that we are going to do that under Agenda Item 9.
All right, okay. Never mind.
Nope, that's all right. Thank you for the question. Next item on the agenda?
Mr. Mayor.
Oh, yes, Mr. Trithuie.
Point of order, since we've gone through the consent agenda, it does not show up later on, we probably should discuss the Tulip Time at this point?
Certainly.
Yeah, I think that the way your rules are set up, the way you should be doing is it falls down into the place where it normally would be, which I think is 12, exactly, 12 D3. It would be on 12 D3 under the clerk's.
Okay, yeah, okay.
12, 12 D?
D.
D as in dog. 12 D under city clerk.
Okay, I didn't see it listed there, that's why I brought it up, so.
If we go there, because that's where it would normally go if it hadn't been under the clerk's.
Perfect. Thank you for that clarification.
Great, thank you, Ron. So we will have the Tulip Time Festival approval of the 2020 agreement under the Agenda Item 12D as in dog, number three, although that is the only item under D currently on the regular agenda. Item number six, special presentations and recognition from mayor or council or city manager, and I actually have two mayoral proclamations. We do not have the folks here, so I think I'm just going to stay here and do those mayoral proclamations right here. The first one is for the Black River Public School, the We the People Team state champions. The We the People Team won their state championship and were on their way to Nationals, but the national competition was canceled as of last week. We made the proclamation just before the national competition was canceled. Hopefully, there will be some rescheduling of that, and hopefully, they'll have the opportunity to go. I got the opportunity to meet the team and their coaches and their parents and their sponsors, and wow, we have an incredibly smart group of kids here in this town at Black River Public School. And I'd like to read this now. Proclamation: Whereas, We the People is a nationally recognized civic competition led by the Center for Civic Education, in which students present speeches on constitutional issues and then are scored on their ability to answer follow-up questions from expert judges. And whereas, We the People Organization plays a leadership role, preparing youth to become active and engaged participants in our democratic society. And whereas, the Black River We the People Team placed first in the state of Michigan We the People Competition on January 10, 2020, and were advancing to the national competition, which was to take place on April 24 through 28, 2020 in Washington, DC. And whereas, the Black River We the People Team has been supported by Black River Head of School Shannon Brunick, Coach Peter Lutzman, taking them to Nationals assisted by Hope College student coach Luke Ryder, and Black River student coaches Riley Bukama, Simon Hodson, Joshua Lox, Sullivan Prince, Ashan Rajani, Madeline Rule, and Emma Saunders, family members and friends. And whereas, Black River School We the People Team includes the following students: Lily Giroux, Piper Kendall, Elijah LeBurne, Jonathan Lowry, Sierra Lynch, Ariana Newberry, Nathan Overway, Dylan Pennington, Sia Rajkaharia, Parker Seymour, and Anya Uzmani. And the Black River We the People Scholars Team's success brings honor and distinction to Black River Public School, the city of Holland, and the state of Michigan. Now for, now therefore, I, Nathan Box, Mayor of the city of Holland, do hereby proclaim March 18, 2020, to be a day of honor and recognition for the Black River School We the People Team. In the city of Holland, I encourage all people to honor this day.
Yay.
Yeah.
Pretender, the audience.
Give them a round of applause. Hopefully, they're watching at home. They were, they were incredibly smart group of kids and very well-spoken, had lots of great questions, and I'm sure they're going to do great things in their lives and for the community. We have a second proclamation, and this is to honor the Rotary Club's 100th anniversary. Whereas, it is an honor to pay tribute to the Rotary Club of Holland, a service organization of business and professional leaders united worldwide who conduct humanitarian projects, encourage high ethical standards in all vocations, and work toward world understanding and peace. And whereas, for the past 100 years, the Rotary Club of Holland has effectively implemented community, international, vocational, club, and youth services. And whereas, today Rotary flourishes worldwide with more than 30,000 clubs and more than 1.2 million men and women as club members in more than 160 countries around the world. And whereas, the Rotary Club of Holland Rotarians engage in fellowship by coming together in meetings, usually sharing a meal and many ideas as they become acquainted with fellow members. They share a community of enjoyable conversation and personal commitment, served by staffing committees to perform the particular club ideals in the actual work in their club throughout the community as well as the world, and vow to commit their lives in a way which will reflect the true meaning of the object of Rotary and the four-way test. Now therefore, I, Nathan Box, Mayor of the city of Holland, Michigan, do proclaim March 11, 2020, to be a day of honor and recognition for the Rotary Club of Holland, and encourage all residents to observe this day. Rotary Club of Holland has worked to create a better environment for its citizens of Holland to live, work, and play. Thank you for your dedication to maximizing livability.
Yay.
Special Order of the Day Public Hearing, Finance. Yep, Mr. Van Beek.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Usually, Finance Fiscal Director Tim Bogley would be here to talk about this, but you'll notice that we do not have all of our staff here for various purposes, so I'm covering this tonight. For you and the viewing public to know and understand, the step of creating an industrial development district is typically that first step that's necessary before you would consider what's more commonly sometimes before you. We've had a couple in the last few months, a Public Act 198 request, which is a request for a tax abatement for real property. In this situation, the proposed industrial development district is for a property between US 31 and Veterans Drive, approximately where the address of 95 Veterans Drive would be. That is an area that currently is not in an existing industrial development district. So the public hearing that you would be about to have is the required step, and then you would be able to establish that industrial development district. We understand that the applicant who we've asked that it's okay, that he's not here this evening, is then looking to do a speculative industrial facility of, I think it was approximately 9,000 square feet and a value exceeding $700,000. So again, this is the process that we're asking you to have a public hearing and then a recommended resolution following that would establish this industrial development district, which would then clear the way for the eventual application for a 198.
Great, thank you very much. I believe this is my first public hearing in this regard, so what we're going to do is, I believe, open the public hearing, give the opportunity for folks to, anyone who wants to speak, to speak. Does council speak at that point as well? Nope, nope, and then close the public hearing, and then we do the resolution. All right. Now that I'm sure on what the process is, I will open the public hearing. Is there anyone here who would like to speak in regard to this matter? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Now, what is the pleasure of council?
Will we approve the recommendation?
Move by Hookstra?
Support.
Support by Trithuie? Is there any discussion? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please, Kathy?
Garcia?
Yes.
Trithuie?
Yes.
Arnsour?
Yes.
Hookstra?
Yes.
Raymond?
Yes.
Byrd?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Mayor Box?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda, written petitions and communications. I believe we've received two communications here. I'll have the clerk read what those communications were. We're not going to read the entire body of those communications, because it's been the policy of council to not read the full communication here, but they will be received into the written record. So could you please state what those two communications were that we received? Kathy?
We've received a document from Bob Ashby concerning the day rights ordinance and a document from Trevor Baker regarding reopening the Holland farmer's market.
Great, thank you very much. Next item, 12D3, in regard to Tulip Time, the Tulip Time Festival approval of the 2020 Go ahead, Mr. Van Beek.
Just so everyone is aware, this is a package, and it's a large package of material that typically comes before council, that would do a wide variety of things. It's a streamlined way, if you would, to do all of the approvals for events and vendor licenses and all the things that we, we and our larger community and people from around the nation typically enjoy when we do Tulip Time. Unfortunately, as we, you know, mourn, quite frankly, with Tulip Time as the organization and larger community, that we're not able to experience Tulip Time the way we typically do this year. So there is no action that's necessary because of that announcement, but I will take this opportunity to just encourage everybody, the tulips will bloom, the tulips will come up, and I'm sure that there's ways that we will all be able to celebrate those flowers and celebrate safely in certain ways. So even though, again, there's no need to take action on this from my perspective or recommendation, that just gives a little explanation of why I think you correctly pulled this off the consent agenda. Certainly happy to answer any questions you might have.
Great, thank you. Any questions from council?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Trithuie?
Just a point of clarification here, Ron, because it's an open end, as far as I'm concerned. Should we not vote on it anyway and just deny it, just so there's legal closure?
Yeah, I think there does need to be closure on that, so a vote to deny it or call for a motion and no motion happens, it dies. Either way is the way to accomplish that.
All right, thank you, Ron. So that for those at home who may not have heard that, the item should either come for a motion or, and vote on it either up or down, and down would probably be the, well, I'm not going to suggest how anybody should vote, let's do that, or that there's a motion and that there's not a second on it and the motion just dies. So what is the pleasure of council?
I will make a motion that we deny the application because of the festival's cancellation.
All right. Move by Trithuie, is there support?
Support.
Support by Hookstra?
Support.
Comment from council? Discussion?
So if we vote yes, we vote that this is not taken up, we, it's gone?
We're voting to not engage in the contract with Tulip Time.
As opposed to a motion, okay.
Yes, a yes vote is to vote to not engage in the, in the contract.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Yes, Mr. Hookstra?
One more clarifying question, I guess. This also presumes-
Yes, a yes vote is to vote to not engage in the contract.
Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Hookstra.
One more clarifying question, I guess. This also presumes that there's no exchange or obligation for funding from one party to the other. Is that true?
Yes.
The contract would call for the arrangement for funding and other things, and it just doesn't happen then we need.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so there would be no funds transferred between one party or the other if we denied the contract?
We're just trying to wrap our heads around this. This has never happened.
Yes, this has never happened before. Any other comments or questions from counsel? Anyone who knows me knows that I love Tulip Time as much as anybody else does, and I can echo the city manager's comments. The tulips will bloom again. Spring will come again, and I have all of the faith and confidence in this community, in the public and in the corporate sector, that we will make sure that Tulip Time comes back as strong as it ever was, because it is an institution in this community. It is not only a wonderful tradition, it's not only an opportunity to welcome the world into our community, but it does generate $48 million of economic impact. There are 500,000 people that visit this community during Tulip Time every year. It is going to be a difficult thing to weather, but again, as I said at the beginning of the meeting, we will weather this storm as we have weathered other storms. We will rally and we will rise, and Tulip Time will as well. Kathy, could you call the roll, please?
Trithili?
Yes.
Arnshorst?
Yes.
Corbin?
Yes.
Upstra?
Yes.
Raymond?
Yes.
Byrd?
Yes.
Peters? Garcia?
Yes.
Mayor Box?
Yes. Thank you. Next item, E61, gifts. Kathy, could you please read the gifts that we've received?
The city's manager's office is pleased to report the following gifts: Parks and Recreation, Salpre Scholarship Program, cash receipts from January 27 through March 1, 2020, $78; Parks and Recreation, Sugar Maple Trees at Van Ralty Farm, Carolyn Marquise, $250; Human Relations, 2020 International Relations Festival, Elzinga Volkers, $500. It is recommended that these donations be accepted with appreciation, credited to the appropriate account, and an expression of gratitude be forwarded to said donors.
Thank you. What is the pleasure of counsel?
Motion to accept with appreciation.
Move by Tuthui. Is there support? Was that support by Byrd? Thank you. Any comment or discussion from counsel? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those same sign. Motion carries. Communications from the city manager. Mr. Van Beek?
Just a few items tonight that I think are appropriate. First, just an overall statement, particularly representing and on behalf of the employees of the city. I think I've shared with some of you that I heard the statement last week somewhere that this challenge, this crisis that we're facing as a community and as a nation and as a world is something that will challenge the culture of any organization. And I'm here to tell you that the culture, not only of this community, but specifically, I'm going to speak on behalf of the culture of this organization represented by the employees that represent all of you and serve the viewing public, is passing with flying colors and is strong. And I think that's an important message to send. I'm extremely proud of the group that I serve with, and I think that's a great message to extend to the community that while there's uncertainty also with the individuals, the humans and the families that are represented by our staff, they understand and are rising to the challenge and understand that they've chosen a career of public service. And while that service looks differently than it did a day ago, a week ago, a month ago, and we're going to continue to make the best decisions we can with the information possible at the time to keep everyone healthy, including our employees, we're also, as the mayor said earlier, we are open, and we're going to continue to provide the services that this community deserves and needs. Assistant City Manager Matt Vendeikin is going to help me a moment, and hopefully this can be picked up by the viewing public also. Certainly one of the changes that we're making in our services is that we are asking, we are really, really asking for the community to access our services primarily through our website and by phone if necessary. And the website is a great place to get that clearinghouse of information. While City Hall is open in a very modified way, we really would prefer the public not come in and either endanger their health or, quite frankly, the health of our employees by coming in face to face. Although, we do have a situation now in the lobby where residents that do come in, we will greet them and hold them, if you would, in the lobby, and staff will come to them, employing social distancing and other safe measures to keep both that citizen safe and our employees safe. On the website, what Matt's going to do is he's going to highlight three particular areas that we really encourage people to look at. That first area is COVID mitigation guidance, and for those that may not know, the city does not have a medical doctor on staff. We do not have health professionals on staff, and we are being very vigilant in following the advice of those that are experts in this area, primarily through our county health departments. And the majority of our city falls within Ottawa County Health Department. I have been in daily contact with them on all of your behalf, and we really stress that people continue to, and you can use our website as that clearinghouse of location, to get questions answered and to, again, get that mitigation guidance from the health department as a point of contact. The other thing that we have, and I'm very impressed and proud to, in a very small way, be part of this, is the response of our Health and Human Services field. Lynn represents that in a very key way. You know, the leaders in United Way, in Community Spoke, in the Lake Shore Nonprofit Alliance, in Good Samaritan Ministry, and so many others that I could name, so wisely and so well came together the end of last week and said, you know, there's people that want to help, there's people that need help, and if that's not coordinated in some way, those efforts won't have the effect and the efficiency that they otherwise would have. So you had a group that basically, I think, dare say, has been working around the clock, not only to set up an initial system, but also to continue to gather information, identify gaps, identify needs, and then coordinate how our community can respond to the needs of neighbors. And that's what we are in this community. We're neighbors. So very proud to point out and would encourage everyone to go to this site. You can find there, if you have a need, how you can get that need met. But additionally, you can find out how you can give in three primary ways. Some are able to volunteer. They fall in those age categories, and others, they're really encouraging, I believe, it's those from 18 to 50 years of age that are otherwise healthy and not compromised in any way with immunity or others, to volunteer your time. And that's being coordinated, again, across the community and done in a very safe way. You also can volunteer from home, which I think is a great option that they've added that wasn't there initially. So those that maybe are feeling isolated in other ways, you know, I think all of us are looking ways to maybe gain control of this uncertainty that we have in certain ways. It's a fantastic way to figure out how to give back. The other way is we definitely have the need for donating goods. So there's a button here, and there's lots of community partners that serve as the place to bring donated goods, and they also suggest what things they're looking for, that we're finding out our needs as they coordinate that out in the community. And then ultimately, there's ways that we need to come together as a community and donate financially. There are some things that a volunteer isn't going to totally help, although I think that's very important. There's goods that aren't totally going to help. There is a financial need out there also. There have been three organizations, the way that I understand it, that are kind of pillars, that are foundational givers in this event. It was the Community Foundation of Holland Zealand. It was the Grand Haven Community Foundation, and it was Greater Ottawa County United Way. Because this isn't just a Holland Zealand thing, although that's what we're proud of in this room, right? This is across the entire county. So again, I make that information available so that the viewing public knows that this is a recommended place to figure out how you can help your neighbors. The other thing that we have on that site is it's information of city-specific impact information. So, and like many other things, that's changing daily. So we have on there the meetings that have been canceled or postponed. We have on there, you know, the fact that we did have to make the sad but necessary information that we've canceled our recreation program, programming. The fact that while essential services are still open, there's other services that we are not providing right now. For example, City Hall is usually abuzz with activity this time of year of people coming in and getting passports. Well, we're not providing passports to services right now. So that is a place that the viewing, that the public can come and get information, and then also larger on the website, that's where there's a lot of other services and information that you can receive there. The last thing that I just think is a neat thing that the city, and really in partnership with the Holland Board of Public Works, really stood up and did, is that we have Wi-Fi that was stood up and made available to the public at the Holland Farmers Market, at the Holland Civic Center place, a couple years ago, I think it is now, with, as a result of the Smart Zone that had in place, and there was some special funding there. And what we have made available, and there's information in several places, the BPW website, but the Holland website, where the public can go there, be in the parking lot, utilize that Wi-Fi. We kind of give you guidance of where exactly to be in the parking lot. I think there are some limited hours there, but we really encourage that, hey, that's a place then that for those in the public that maybe don't otherwise have reliable or any internet, hey, go there, download some stuff, do it safely. But I think that's just one of, and it's relatively minor, right, but that's one of so many things that are happening where this community is rallying to this crisis that we're in, and trying to figure out how to support each other and rally around each other. And with that, again, very proud to serve this community and very proud of all of the employees that are represent and standing before you tonight. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Van Beek. Next item is motion to go into a closed-door session to review two written legal opinions with the city attorney. Also want to make the point to the viewing public, there will not be any more public business that takes place. Once we leave the closed-door session, we will then immediately adjourn the meeting as well. Oh, I'm sorry. I did. I had it marked on my thing, too. Let me back up a bit. Communications from members of counsel. I think I've done what I need to do with the mayor. Thank you. I skipped right over myself, too. Thank you, Mr. Tuthui. Communication from members of counsel. If you're going to go to that length, you better have a comment, yeah.
I might as well say something. Yes, I'll make it very, very brief. There was some very nice things said early on in the meeting. Before the meeting started, there was some nice things said before the prayer. There were some nice things said by staff. I'm not going to belabor that, and I'm just going to agree 100%. I've been a member of this community for, yeah, that many years. We've had high times, we've had low times, but the work ethic, the intestinal fortitude, the moxie of this community has been tested, and we've always come through with shining stars. Staff has always been put to a test, sometimes more than others, and I've always stepped at the plate without a problem at all. I was a proud member of that staff at one point. My father was. I had a number of uncles. I know an awful lot of staff members, and I can't begin to say enough how proud I am of each and every one of you. Folks, as it's been said, and I'm going to say it again, we will get through this. There's going to be some bumps and bruises. There's going to be some new paradigm shifts. There's going to be some new normals. But if Holland is one thing, it is resilient. I don't care how many different people we have around this deus. I don't care how many people we have churning over in the city. 33,000 of us with 33,000 different opinions, but when it comes to helping out your neighbor, we're there. So Holland, hang on, be strong, and we will come back stronger and better than ever.
Well said. Thank you. Any other members of counsel? Now I will entertain a motion to go into a closed-door session.
So move.
Move by Arnshorst.
Support.
Support by Tuthui. Any discussion? Roll call vote?
Arnshorst?
Yes.
Corbin?
Yes.
Upstra?
Yes.
Raymond?
Yes.
Byrd?
Yes.
Peters?
Yep.
Garcia?
Yes.
Trithili?
Yes.
Mayor Box?
Yes. Thank you. We'll now, I believe we're going to move upstairs into the training room, and we'll be doing the closed-door session up there. Thank you, all of those, everyone in the public, for joining us this evening. As I said before, the only thing that we will be doing after the closed-door session is adjourning the meeting. So thank you very much.